Ready to roll?
Sure.
We will call the meeting to order at 7:01. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, and free of any justice or error.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have none.
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, tonight's consent agenda has minutes from our last meeting, which is July 14th. And then we also have the budget report, year-to-date budget report, and we have two sets of payables totaling a little more than $211,000. As far as invoices in tonight's agenda packet, there's really nothing that's obscure or, you know, everything is pretty routine. I don't know if that was the right word, but I used it.
Status quo.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public forum. Do we have anybody here to speak through public forum? Ron?
Ron Berger, 115 West North Street. I attended quite a few meetings last year and felt spring, summer, and fall. The reports every meeting was, "The golf course is doing fantastic, the golf course is doing fantastic." Well, now according to the last minutes I've reported in the Janesville Journal, the golf course come out in the black, or in the red, excuse me. And for the last five years I've been hearing this golf course is doing so great, so great, so great, but I've never seen any figures in the paper, anything to back it up. I did some research on this, and Janesville's the only golf course in the state of Minnesota that has a public golf course with a population of under 10,000 and has a golf pro. The report in the, the reasoning they were saying for the deficit in the golf course last year is because of the weather. Well, can somebody explain to me from 1999 to 2009, or 2019, that we had 21 years of bad weather that the golf course lost a lot of money? I mean, the city is being run like big government now. What did they do at the time the golf course was running that big deficit? We taxed the people in this, or Janesville. We took money from other departments, which resulted in almost electricity being cut off because they didn't have the funds to redo their generators. And also, the city is catering to outside interest. Near 2020, after a $100,000 loss by the golf course, they had a public meeting. In that public meeting, a lot of people from a certain organization showed up at that meeting, saying why we should keep the golf course, blah, 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 this and that. Well, a lot of those people, in fact, the majority of those people don't even live in the city of, in Janesville. They don't pay taxes. So what did we do? Let's tax the citizens of Janesville. And then let's let outsiders golf cheaper than the citizens of Janesville. I would think after all those years of losses, and now another year of loss, something needs to be changed out there. We've got way too much overhead out there. I did a survey of about 25 golfers, and I asked them what their preference was as far as why they were attracted to the golf course. Not a one says the golf clubhouse. They all said the golf course. Well, the city clubhouse is costing us a lot more to run than maintain that golf course, which a lot of people commented the great job that the golf course manager is doing out there maintaining the golf course. So I'm looking at, it was brought up in 2020 as far as when I was on the golf advisory board, I, at that time I mentioned the fact that, hey, if you're in business, you've got to run it like a business, which the golf course is a city-owned business. And it's not being run that way. It's being run like big government. We run short, let's just go after other sources to get the money instead of making cuts. And I've noticed, another thing is, the number of city employees now we've got and the wages we're paying, that's another one. We used to only have four, now we've got five. And doing some research on that also, I've checked towns of population similar to Janesville, the majority have three. In fact, one which has a population bigger than Janesville has three, and they also have the Department of Motor Vehicles in their office, they run that too. So I think after this report of the golf course losing money again, I think it's time the city stepped up and started doing something, like making some cuts. And they are possible. In 2020, when I was running for council, I heard that you can't do that. You can't just eliminate a job. Yes, you can, and totally legal. It's called corporate restructuring. You eliminate a position, give it a new name, it's perfectly legal. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Do we have anybody else to speak through public forum?
Representative Keith Allen, Representative 19A from Kenyon, Minnesota. Just was stopping in to listen in on the city council meeting this evening and say hi, and just kind of hear what's currently going on, and potentially give you guys an update at a later date if you guys are possibly interested. So some of the things that we did end up doing here in the state this last go-around, for the last session, is we were able to actually protect the CPA and LGA for communities as far as being able to protect some of the funding that's currently going on. Some of the things that I was able to, we were able to accomplish is stopping some of the tax increases that we are currently, were currently being proposed in order to try to offset some of the budgetary problems there having up at the Capitol. And the other thing we ended up getting done is actually passing a bonding bill. It was focusing mostly on state projects, cities, roads, but there were some communities that did receive some dollars in order to be able to help with bonding. But wanted to stop in, say hi, and just listen in on the meeting, and I'll stick around for questions afterwards, so.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak through public forum? Going once, twice?
I want to read this letter out.
Oh, you want to do that during this portion?
I told him during the public forum.
Okay. Clinton's got something to read here.
Okay, so as the council knows, recently, last couple council meetings, we've been talking about enforcing the parking regulations on Main Street. So notice, we're sent out today, and we did get some feedback with that, with some concerns. So here's a gentleman who has a business on Main Street. He could not make tonight's meeting, but he emailed this to me about two hours ago, actually, would like me to read it. "Thank you for taking the time to hear me. I would like to first express that, had I been made aware of this ordinance and its enforcement, as well as the timing of the city council meeting, I would have made arrangements to attend. Unfortunately, due to prior financial and professional commitments, I will not be able to be there in person. I am writing today to voice my concerns regarding enforcement of the three-hour parking limit on Main Street. While I understand that some business owners have expressed frustration about limited customer parking near the storefronts, and I emphasize with, I empathize with those concerns, I also believe that parking challenges are a common issue in most downtown districts. It's something that many of us as business owners learn to navigate. As the owner of a business located on Main Street, I employ a team that works in-office daily. The new enforcement creates a significant disruption to our workflow, as my staff will now be required to interrupt their day multiple times just to move their vehicles. This not only affects productivity, but it also leads to a loss of available work time and ultimately, financial impact on the business. In many cases, we already park a block or more away from the office due to limited availability. It's part of operating in a growing downtown area. However, if parking enforcement becomes more stringent without thoughtful consideration, it may be, it may ultimately force us to reevaluate the sustainability of maintaining our office in this location. I would also like to raise an important consideration. Some of the persistent parking issues may be related to residential tenants living above retail and office space downtown. If residents are parking long-term on Main Street during peak business hours, that is an issue that deserves separate attention. One possible solution could be the implementation of residential parking permits during business hours, which could help alleviate the strain on businesses while also generating revenue for the city. Downtown Janesville has experienced a remarkable revitalization over the past decade, and it's been a joy to witness and be part of that progress. That said, enforcing an outdated ordinance like this one without revisiting its practical impact risks stalling that growth. I respectfully urge the council to consider revising or modernizing this ordinance to reflect the current needs of downtown businesses in the broader community. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Written by Clinton Broviak from Synergy Home Care. He's got a pretty awesome first name.
If you say so.
Okay, so he asked me to read that. You know, if the council wants to revisit the parking on Main Street, you, obviously you have that right to do it, you certainly can. So think about it, let me know. All right, thank you.
Moving on to notices and communications.
Yes, you have the bi-monthly publication from the league that's on the table in front of you. And then the other item we have, Chief Johnson is here tonight, he has provided the second quarter police report for the council to review. That's what I have for notice and communication.
The golf advice report that is on July 30th. The year-to-date numbers are looking good. We're going to start looking into some grants that are out there. We currently have 220 league members, which is the most we've ever had. Things coming up are going to be, we're going to start looking into siding the roof, furnace, maybe some lighting inside the clubhouse, and also the removal of lots of ashtrays that are dead or dying from EAB. So Jacob's going to start looking into that, how he wants to go about doing that, whether it be in-house or outsourced, but he has not, he's not came to that conclusion yet. And our next meeting will be on September 10th at 5:30. Pretty good, we had a pretty good meeting, I don't know, it's an hour probably, and one overlap of stuff, I guess, so. The Personnel Committee met today, and we will be going over what we talked about later in this meeting.
At the last PDA meeting, we did about the empty lot of town, we still, as far as I know, have not received any quotes for repairs that are necessary up there. PDA begins tomorrow. We also spent a considerable amount of time discussing our storefront grants program and our, some of the other homes that the EDA gets out there. And we feel, or we will be reviewing the way that program is set up, the people that we're doing. As far as park roads, we are unable to give the entire amount of money we have set aside from HUD for our window program. We will be looking at putting in 20 windows now instead of 40, and I don't know if we can get them done yet this fall. I guess we'll just have to wait and see where we are. We did get the parking lot patched, not repaired or replaced the way we wanted, and the roof has been repaired or brought up to a A rating, which is the best rating you can have in our areas of concern. It has been taken care of.
The park board met on the 28th. We helped for a fair amount of stuff. We talked about the new benches and kind of where the park board thought we should head towards plaques or engravings. Jacob had a picture of plaques that are used out at the golf course, some laser etching, good size, fairly affordable. The park board was leaning towards that that would be the better option. They're holding up at the golf course, they should do well for the rest of the benches. I don't know if we had an official recommendation for that yet.
No, it's not.
Memory's not what it used to be. Janesville Matters was in attendance, talking about a few things, how we can help them. They were wondering if there was a percentage of employee time that can be allotted annually or just here and there. I think it was going to be looked into a little bit, but nothing promised. Their big concern that they wanted answers for was their carts. They just got it, it's very helpful. Jacob felt that he had a place to store it in the off-season when they weren't using it out at the golf course without being a problem, wanted to find a place, see if council or the city could help them find a place to use it during the active season, somewhere around city halls, somewhere to be plugged in. Couldn't really come up with a place, but it was being considered. And then we did ask them to just make us a list of what do you want from us, what are you trying to get done, what would you like from us, and that way we can come back and hear if it's realistic and what we can accomplish.
Sounds good. Department has reports.
I actually don't have any tonight. We're just going to focus on part of the budget tonight, so. Police and fire were here last meeting.
Staff reports.
Administrator report.
Oh, administrator report. Oh, yeah. Skip that one.
All right, in tonight's administrative report, you have the July reconciliation from the bank. We did receive the small cities assistant aid for streets. We received the first half of that a couple weeks ago. We also did receive about half of our local government aid earlier this year, we received a little bit, and then we usually get more in July, and then we will have the rest coming at the end of the year in December. So that money is here. We did send letters on parking Main Street to properties today, and of course, there was some feedback with that, we can talk about that more if you want later. Do you remember last fall, the city council worked with the utility board on issuing equipment certificates for improvements at the power plant? We're going to do that again a little bit more, probably at the September meeting. George will be here, he does all of our finances, so he'll be here for that meeting. I was just going to ask, to involve meetings the remainder of the year, I know we, you know, we've been meeting once a month for a while now, do we want to start meeting twice a month? Last year, we started meeting twice a month in September. Is that something you would like to do, so it would be the second, fourth Monday?
Probably.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
I don't, I didn't start coming till, what, October, November?
Yeah.
If there's a valid reason for it, I don't see a problem with it.
Budgets and whatnot, I kind of hear you.
Yeah, something that we think you covered in one meeting, I think that's fine.
Yep, okay. So let's plan on that beginning in September. That works for you?
Yeah.
Yeah. 8/22, September. And then the last part of my administrative report here tonight, Trenton Lawton from Troop 89, he's here tonight with his dad. He plans on doing an Eagle project out at the pavilion by the Deer Pen, out at Lakeview Park. So he has put together a little plan of action. Joe Zempe and I will review that, we'll be in touch with him if we have any questions. Would you like to say anything tonight? I don't mean to put you on the spot, sorry.
Well, I intended to make it out there and take a look at what the pavilion looks like now, so if you could fill us in on what you intend to do while you're out there? Yeah, so.
I don't want to cut, which one is it? Is it the top?
Yeah, it is up at the top by the playground.
Gotcha.
So, most of it is, we're going to be repainting the wood and the tint, and then there were some areas that there was some wildlife, like a squirrel or something that was chewing up the post, so we're just going to place some lumber there to kind of stop that, and then we're just going to overall clean it up and make it look better, and then should have a fresh coat of paint too.
And we have in the past provided some funding for these projects. We've helped some, not all of them, but some, up to like $250, so if you want to keep some of your receipts, we can help you with that.
Yep. Should be able to, I don't know for sure yet, but I should be able to get a paint donation.
Okay.
So I should have that covered. So it would just be for the lumber and stuff like that.
Okay, perfect.
Work. Thank you.
Yep.
That is all I have for administrative report.
Motion to approve administrative report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to staff reports, Sam.
Yeah, we're going to start here with admin, we're going to look at a portion of the budget. As you know, we have looked at police and fire budgets at our next meeting, we will look at the public works, which would be the streets and the park system. So the rest of tonight's, the rest of the general fund budget we're going to look at tonight, some of these departments are relatively, for lack of better words, they're relatively smaller, so we kind of combined a whole bunch here tonight. I just, I wanted to say that of the general fund budget draft that you're looking at tonight, if you compare the draft numbers to the numbers this year, there is just a little bit more than a 1% increase. So that's, we're really in really, really good shape at this point with the budgets. We do have a cost-of-living adjustment per the union contract with the police department, so all employees have that, all full-time employees, part-time have that. Insurance will be going up. We don't know final numbers, you know, the league usually gets that to us by late fall, so we'll be able to update those numbers at a later date. And then health insurance, we're kind of working on what to do with health insurance right now. I think I had told you that health partners will no longer cover us beginning December 1st. They, from my understanding, they're no longer covering non-metro regions in Minnesota. So Julie Olson, our insurance agent at the Janesville Agency, she and I are working together on looking at some different options that employees can choose from, okay? So we'll know more about that health insurance at a later date. Does anybody have any questions? I guess a couple of the big changes now in 2026, we obviously have a general election, so we put some money into the elections budget to cover that. We are looking to purchase some more office equipment that we need. And really, other than that, we increased animal control a little bit, just because we have found the last couple of years that there are more and more stray animals out there, so we did budget a little bit more to cover the cost at the vet clinic for that. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple. I noticed under accounting Andrea, Sarah, Sarah, Jill are included, but where is Sada going to us for Sada?
Yeah, they are in the economic development, community development budget, that's a couple pages later. It's probably on it there, I haven't. Yeah, about halfway down the community development budget, we have the cost for them. Last page.
Last page?
Yep.
And then there is a line item when the footnote is shook. What is that?
Oh, the incentives for building in that shook development, this is kind of the same thing we did with Scott Moles next door. He receives so much per, when he got his building permit approved, he received so much.
When the permit was approved, they received the money?
Well, the certificate of occupancy.
So, yeah.
Yeah, when it was done.
Once it's built, then.
And inspected, yep.
What does the nursing home get money for?
The nursing home gets state money if they pay rent. So what we do is we charge rent to the nursing home, and then they get that money reimbursed from the state, so it's kind of a wash. It's been going on for a couple of years now.
Okay. I think that answers what I have answered, I guess. I was unaware that your office equipment has become that expensive.
Yeah.
That shocked me.
Maybe if I quit breaking the stuff.
No more still on your property.
Anything else on the 101 budget?
So then at our September council meeting, we will adopt a preliminary tax levy, and then from there we can.
Turn it back.
Turn it back, yep. Well, we're in really good shape at this point, so that's kind of cool, actually.
Moving on.
Had a request from a resident, this is item number two on the agenda, a child in the house of autism, and they are making a request that we purchase a sign that says something, that I have on the screen here, autistic child in the area, child with autism, that type of thing. I did explain to the property owner that when a sign request is made, it goes to the city council, since you're the road authority, right? So you have to decide if you would like us to install this sign. Any thoughts?
We don't have to pick the design, we just have to say yes or no.
Yeah, then I'll find it.
If you're old, if I'm just too aware of this.
Yeah.
My only concern is that if we allow, are we going to go down a slippery slope of having to install many, many signs around town?
Well, I was kind of wondering, is that the same area, if they were saying that people were speeding last summer? Is this, oh, is it the church speeding, because most people are speeding in that area?
I don't remember that.
Well, it's not right now, it's not like there's a big or common, big or chance. It's a, we started, but, we, we actually. I thought it, that we have to, if they really want this, and now.
Right.
I would think that by seeing it that way, there's going to be more work, but.
People put out those, were just the little green kids signs.
Yep.
People ignore those all the time. I mean, it's a good idea, but is it going to work? And you're right, it's a slippery slope.
I also feel that if a resident wants to put a sign in their yard, they're, they're welcome to do so. I'm not trying to discount the request by any means, but I just don't want to be pounding all kinds of signs in around town when, if, if they feel compelled to do so, they can put one in their yard.
My concern comes from the wording on the sign. I had a relative who was deaf, and the people in charge chose to put a sign in front of her house that said, "Slow death trial," and she did not appreciate that at all. She's not still.
I think I'd be more, I'd lean more towards getting a sign that said, "Beware children" before something that, like Ivan took calling on a specific issue. Because even if we had put up more signs around the city in some of the more populated neighborhoods, kids at play or beware of kids comes across better, I think.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead with the sign up sometime.
I'd like Clinton to maybe look into pricing, circle back.
Well, I mean, are we thinking, are we going to have the autism lettering on it, or are we looking more towards?
Children at play time.
Yeah, you hit a thousand of them.
Right.
All right.
Is it just, you'd like the sign, or do you want the fat sign?
I, I would really like to see a sign that says, "Caution, children at play."
I think it happens to the Indians, if they want to sign in their yard, they can put one in there, but I don't, I don't think that would just work.
We have no idea on the number of autistic children. We have in town, it could be half a dozen or a dozen of them. So it could be. A lot of them, right? My motion failed anyway. I didn't get a second.
I can call the resident and explain that motion was made, died from a lack a second, and maybe encourage the property owner to maybe install one in their front yard or something of that type. I don't have an R signs in Mankato. Could definitely take care of that. That's just my, I mean, I think you can, if they're compelled to do so, they can.
Public safety, SRO officer arrangements.
Yes, the school called a few weeks ago, and as you recall, we, we switched our SRO and city cost sharing agreement beginning January 1 to where the school will pay for basically a couple days of the officer. They are requesting that we begin that at the beginning of this school year, which would be September 1. That will create some lost budgeted revenues for the rest of this year, because as you know, we did budget, you know, for that full payment every month, which would drastically go down. Personnel committee met today, just looking for city council input. The school is basically, from what I understand, saying that they are willing to begin this in September rather than January. Any thoughts?
What about the first of November? Split the difference?
Can do that, or could ask that.
Yeah, we never talked about that.
Okay, I'll call.
I guess I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I don't know if it's.
As long as we have an SRO, it doesn't matter to me.
We do have to try to watch out for our budgets here and there. It's not a lot.
For sure, for sure.
Okay. Thoughts, Steve? Suggest November 1 instead of September 1?
We're in a position. We're in a position for it.
Right.
Very important. So we're going to bounce that off them and see what comes back.
Yep, I will do that. I had mentioned it was in there. Oh, I don't know.
Sounds like that's between you two, I don't know.
If he wants to get up and talk about some of these incidents, that.
I was hoping Eve would have given it, because I have a serious question for our administrator about that report.
Well, let's have it.
I'll circle back.
I would like our administrator to answer why the police officers give us such a detailed report, but no other department has. We don't know how many times we've had a new meter hooked up in town, or how many times the power has gone out. We don't know how many times the sump pumps have stopped in heavy rain. We don't know how many bottles of beer are sold at the golf course, or how many carts are rented, and your report has all that detail. So are we pushing what we're asking you to do, or are we not asking enough of our other administrators?
Hey, you only have one.
Department.
Well, Clinton, he's got a valid point. If we're not getting this, maybe you have a different administrator.
Oh.
That would sound, yeah.
That's not where I was going with it.
I think I'm going to go sit down again.
I thought it was a legitimate question, and that you have every little ticket or time you stop somebody on this report, and we don't get that kind of information from other department heads.
It is nice to see the work being put in.
I will point out, there's a couple flaws in this. It was a clerical error with the CIS software, that when the reports were run, it was bringing up some of the wrong information, so I had to kind of go in through and pick some of it apart. So there is a few things in there that weren't, "Don't tell them you made a mistake." It really wasn't me, I had to try to read between the lines, but I appreciate that. I do try to keep you guys up to speed with what's going on over there, and I think that's important.
Yeah.
Personally, it doesn't bother me that the other departments don't do this. I'm happy to do it, because I think it's important, so.
So it's, it's just, maybe I want more information from the other departments.
I can understand that.
Yeah, they could be a little more detailed.
Yeah.
I, I'm happy to do it.
If your administration, can we put in a request to the next department?
Sure.
It's really weird, I don't think it makes sense.
Yeah, I have no, no way of knowing what I'm saying, because I'm a.
Last item on the agenda is from the golf course.
Yes, let me get there. Scott Allen, our general manager pro at the clubhouse, has announced that he will be retiring sometime soon. We, the personnel committee met today, we need, our first step now would be to replace the position, and the big question for you tonight, and if you want to think about this, we can decide it at our next meeting, but would you like to see a general manager out there, like a clubhouse manager, or would you like to continue to have a pro?
I'm not a big golf guy, so I got to ask, what, what actually are his responsibilities right now?
Well, he runs the day-to-day of the clubhouse, tournaments, events, league play, you know, there's special events out there. And as a pro, he also provides golf lessons. And then, of course, you know, supervising the whole golf function, basically. Historically speaking, for a handful of years, we had a clubhouse manager, we did not have a pro, but then the council at the time, back then, decided that they wanted the pro, so that's what we have now. When I say pro, I mean a licensed.
PGA.
PGA, yeah, professional, yep. Well.
Well, a clubhouse manager could do. Lessons. I mean, he doesn't have the credentials, I guess, as, as a.
Licensed.
Licensed pro.
Some, some golf courses, yeah, some, some golf courses have a pro, some don't. I mean, it's.
I guess for us, I'd like, I'd like to see the financial aspect of it, are, how much are we going to lose, like, from lessons and having a pro versus just having somebody look over it? I mean, that amount of money might make it worth it.
The city doesn't, he doesn't, he keeps the lessons, the less money.
He, he keeps the less money.
Yeah.
In addition to his normal salary.
Correct. The Personnel Committee is leaning towards the general manager.
Yeah?
That was our recommendation. So when we write the, when we write the job description, you know, we'll have minimum qualifications, preferred qualifications, you know, we're still going to need somebody that is very familiar with the game of golf, that is able to, because, you know, running a league with 220 golfers in it, it's, it is, and you've got to know kind of what's, what works, what doesn't. Yes, right. So that's kind of where our recommendation.
So does the city council want us to put together a clubhouse general manager job description? Do you want to look at it? Do you want, or do you want maybe the Personnel Committee to look at the job description and approve it before we advertise the position? How do you want, how do you want this done? What did I just say?
Yes, we want, we would like to see the job description before it's posted.
Okay.
Do we, do we want to say it, or do we want Personnel?
The Personnel Committee, that's what you're there for.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, that'll come through Personnel Committee, and then we'll be released.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, shouldn't be action on that, um, I would say until we have the.
Right.
Yeah. I don't think we, we're not hiring right now.
Only one thing left.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're down to the last thing. Second.
Oh, man, that was the fastest second in the.
All in favor.
Wild West.
Meeting adjourned at 7:47 PM. Thank you.